I'd like to introduce our Mayor, Joseph Manolo, and our new appointee, Ms. Nadia El Flamenco Bolts to the commission. So, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. I am delighted to be here today to give the appointment and oath of office to Ms. Nadia El Flamenco Bolts. And today, so will you please raise your right hand? I state your name.
I'm Nadia El Flamenco.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, thank you to the commission, John, all the city, Daily City, for supporting this and for approving it. Also, to my family, my kids, and the father of my kids. And hopefully, we make something good together with the community and everybody to make a better Daily City. All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
Congratulations. Right appointee and right to work.
Thank you.
Oh, that's beautiful.
That is beautiful.
We're little family, right? Look, now, look, there's their uncle. Now, you stay in the picture of the both of you guys, the commissioners.
Oh, yeah.
Beautiful children. I know, I love this guy. Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. You guys are now tito.
One.
Lolos.
Ready, more kids.
Smile.
Okay, mijo. That's the talk, look at that talk.
Say hi, too.
Yeah, look at him.
Pierre's got competition, Canada's baby.
All right, thank you.
Oh, Joseph.
Okay.
Wait, the mayor's coming.
One more, one more.
You guys.
Joseph.
Joseph, you want to get in? Come on.
Come on, come on.
Be family. Okay, you're gonna have to hold for two shots.
Scoot over.
Okay, ready?
Compress.
One, two, three.
Oh, no, I'm talking.
Yeah, come here. No, you have to come here.
Denise, Denise, Denise.
You have to.
One, two, three. I just do my job.
Now, Denise, Denise.
I'm more than happy.
I am, I'm good.
Good evening, and we demand Denise come up here.
Demand.
I'm ready to go.
Come on, come on. Denise.
Yeah, I'll come by.
Denise. Denise loves children.
Two, three. One, two, three, oh, wow.
Cool, 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 cool.
One, two, three, okay, I got.
And then the mayor's camera.
One more, one more, one more. One, two.
Yeah, I know.
One, two, three. Charles Sanchez called.
Yeah, certainly, no.
All right.
Nothing like telling everybody.
All of our locations, that's, that's the best shot.
Yeah. Another thing you have, the, the, the bus routes that can get you, get folks who need to pick up there.
There's a bus stop right there.
Or the, the Free Daily City Shuttle that I think pulls into the Westlake?
Uh, Ready Wheels does, but.
Okay, yes. So, um, you got that working for you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, that might be, that is an ideal site possibility, yeah.
I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
Please Denise, I'm excited for your questions.
What time are you looking at doing it as well?
Yeah, so, um, when we first did at Sunset Ridge, it was between, uh, nine AM and three o'clock. That's the time it took to do everything. The actual open hours was from eleven to two. And we as a team are trying to always default to yes, to not always say, so like if we're packing up and someone says, "Hey, I just got picked up my kid, I, I would really like food if it's possible," we say yes, we're like, of course, we're not gonna close the doors on you. Um, and so that's something else we wanna try is, um, and help our volunteers and how can we move towards like defaulting to yes? And then if we can't really do everything we promised, how can we still like come up with creative solutions to change their minds? Or support our, support people so they don't feel ashamed or stigmatized, or like, oh, I guess I can't, I don't belong here. So we wanna eradicate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
What, what are the requirements for the food sharing lab? I know you said a hundred seventeen thousand family-wise, is that kind of the criteria that you're?
Not, I mean, the biggest one is parking, is, uh, parking, I would say, one of the biggest criteria. Everything else is more of a wish list. We would like to have electricity if possible, in order to plug coffee and tea, um, but we also talked about that, so it might not even be a problem. We would like to also be able to play music, um, things like that. Um, otherwise, you know, cold storage would be ideal, um, in terms if we wanted to test longer hours. So for people who couldn't come earlier, if you had somewhere to store some food, people come later. Also, that helps, um, a lot with like, um, just people coming, so it's not, it just feels very congested in one period of time, it's spread out. So that's, that is not a requirement, that's just more like, I think parking is a requirement, um, but otherwise, there is nothing else. We're, we're, we're being, we're trying to, we wanna be flexible with whatever.
What other requirements though, like as a, a participant?
As a participant? Oh, so as a participant, you would have to self-certify that you need food. It would be written on the, the sign-in sheet and, um, but besides that, we wouldn't ask for income requirements, um, at all. So, but it's also, um, part of the pilot program, so to see if, you know. And there are another big thing that we wanna be cautious of, you know, people who do have really nice bags, Mercedes-Benz, things like that, um, they might also need food, because we just don't know their situation, you know? People buy really expensive shoes, but they actually maybe not have the money to do it right, it's all about image. So we also recognize that, we don't wanna judge people, but if there are ever like a problem or something that would come up, it'd be like, then we would kind of address it and pull it aside, and then we would see like, are the people who need it are getting it? We did a survey at Sunset Ridge, um, to measure, um, and it was anonymous, um, to see if people within a certain bracket were receiving the food. So we did actually, we're serving sixty percent of the client, or we call them clients, we served, were made between, um, thirty-three thousand and eighty thousand dollars, which is within our FPL of the, on the federal level, obviously, but, um, only, I think, twenty percent made over, um, a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars, yeah.
Question?
Yeah.
Is there a possibility that this can be on a weekend? I'm just saying for the single mom that works.
Definitely.
You know, and then for parents that are working two jobs. So I think it would be more attractive if it's during the weekend, because they are off, and then they will say, you know what? There is the food, food, food bank, and, um, we should go there.
Yeah.
After, you know, so we save one week of, or every weekend of, of groceries.
Right.
I wonder, that's a possibility.
That is a possibility, and that's something that we've brought up, a lot of the places and organizations and people we've talked to, weekends are, um, not convenient for those organizations, because they have other programs, like for churches, they have programs going on on weekends, so that's not preferable to them. That's why usually week works, but weekends are something that we would like to push for as well, if possible.
Cause I think if the community volunteers, then we can hang.
Yeah, oh, and just to say, and thinking about volunteers, we have a committed core of volunteers from Sunset Ridge, who are, like, I think between twenty-five and thirty people who would come and help out. So we would bring those, those bodies, those peoples, those hands, so we wouldn't be asking for more helpness, or unless, if, you know, people from the community, Dodger Center, whatever that looks like, we'd be like, we would love to participate, how can we do that, then that would be great.
I have one more question. What foods are offered to the community?
Perfect question. So, it's grocery style, so it's always produce, protein, dairy, um, and fifty percent of what we give out is produce, um, and it's seasonal. And because we live in California, we do get grape produce, we get it, it's donated and purchased as well. Yeah, I, oh, I just wanted to let you know, something that Joseph Kern had brought up before is, um, waste. Um, that has been a concern in the community, and I just wanna let you know, when we did it at Sunset Ridge, we had our people come pick up the waste at the end, so if that's a concern you might have, um, we can take care of that. That's one of, we would like to make that promise to you, yeah.
That's a, that's definitely a good help, because if, at the different locations that Joseph spoke of, that's one of the biggest concerns. But it also could be because it's once a month, and people can't take, like you said, all of it with them.
Definitely. Yeah, so, but that will be taken care of, cause there's always leftover, that's something that happens everywhere.
So, um, the data, have you been collecting some statistics? Because I was, I was reading somewhere, I think a month ago, that to live in San Francisco area, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars a year is considered low income. So that's very, in fact, disturbing.
It is very disturbing.
I am very, so you have two people, I mean, working and still not enough to pay, the rent is astronomical. Our teachers are leaving the peninsula.
Yeah.
And then so they're spending on gas, they're spending on, and then insurance is not good?
No.
The copays are higher, so, so that, that's a, a very good thing that you're doing, and, you know, if, if we could maybe help out in producing a certain data of the population, demography and, and, and based on the tennis, many of my students, the kids, suddenly, the parents lost jobs, so they couldn't continue the program. So I end up sort of spying, just to continue until they, so I'm, I'm glad I had that opportunity to at least share my time. So, but I can see that there's a lot of people who are not able to get, you know, provide the after-school programs, they just, and then so I find out, they, they don't have the job, or. So, I think this would be a good impetus to, to start something, where we, we have to be aware of what's going on.
Yeah, and that's why we wanna be responsive to the changing times, it's just, it doesn't make sense to have programs that are based on a federal poverty level when
Right.
we're way beyond that here. Um, and just to go towards your point, I think, cause I was really front and center during our pilot at Sunset Ridge, and I would always say, you know, when people say, we're kinda suspicious, they're like, oh, who, who's eligible? And I said, you know, and I would just back up and say, listen, San Mateo County came up with a study, and they have their own way of measuring poverty. You're poor if you make less than a hundred and, I think, a hundred and seventeen thousand for this, uh, for the county of San Mateo. Um, and then they were like, oh, well, I fit in that, and I'm like, for your family of four, including, yep. So then that changed the conversation completely. A lot of people don't really think that they could, you know, we all believe we're hard-working Americans, we don't need help. Um, but in fact, it's not our fault, it's just the context, so it's just up to us to kind of frame it, just a little bit, right? Like, you know, as you said, connect saving money to, you know, getting some food. Like, now you can use that for your medical bills, or whatever that looks like for you. Um, anyway, so that's, that is a really big part of it is marketing.
Yeah, because to continue, I wrote on that, uh, former, uh, the legend Michael Chang, the youngest, uh, player, the American to win the French Open. He's in Orange County, and he's raising funds to, you know, money for food banks in Orange County. The, the highest per capita income county in the, the whole world. And they said they have five hundred thousand wo- women and children going to bed hungry at night. So this is like, wow, I mean, so I don't underestimate the, you know, they're just not coming out, but if they're, so maybe there's a little bit more, more into that than, than meets the eye, you know?
And, um, I also volunteer at the Second Harvest, eh, from Daily City, few opportunities with the, um, Peninsula Partnership. And the program, it works, the program, it works, it helps a lot of people, that's why I was telling you about the schedule, because I consider, or I don't know, uh, what way to help the parents that are working full-time, and they are not available to pick up their food during this time, and the kids, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So that's why I was bringing the idea of a Saturday, if it's possible. Because the moms, let's say the mom that is working full-time, is a single mom, he, she has three kids, at what time she's gonna go pick up this food? Or the student that he's trying to figure it out, how to deal with his own independence and everything, so that's why it was, uh, this, this schedule doesn't work for a full-time worker, but the program does work. You know, I, I have volunteered, I know the food you guys provide is a really good quality food. And my kids have been eating from that, I, I don't need to, to say more, right? So I have been volunteering there, I know the programs work, but I just want it more accessible for people that work in full-time. And that's one thing that maybe you can figure out how to do it, or maybe a bag that it keeps in a fridge, and a mom finish her work and goes to pick her up, and she knows that she's gonna get it in any way, you know what I mean?
Definitely. Right now, we've been encouraging people to always pick up food for their friends and family, they just have to write, sign them in, like anybody else. Um, but that is something else, that, that's why we wanna test longer hours, but also, weekends has been something that's been coming up so often, um, but it's also, I, you know, the will of that partnership, and like, does that work, is that convenient, do you have any activities going on? So I, you know, I wanna be responsive to that too, but yes, I am so on board with you, yes.
Right, thanks.
Cool, and I wrote it down, and I, you know, whatever we're talking about here, I'm gonna take it to the head of innovation, and she, she's supposed to be here with me tonight, but she was indisposed, unfortunately, but she's really, really on top of it, Joseph knows, Olivia, yeah.
You know, just to pick up where Nadia mentioned, where, um, having accessibility for the weekends, but maybe also consider, um, um, a volunteer outreach group that can, on those weekdays, that you have scheduled to pick up foods, maybe there can be a network of, um, retired folks that can drive the items to their residents, you know? That are, who are retired, who have, um, um, access to, to bring them up there, bring the, the items that they wish, that they ordered on.
Or bring it to school.
Have a program, yeah.
May I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
There might be opportunities to, if, if there's, speaking of a weekend opportunity, I know that Westmore High School has a very large parking lot. It might be a better option on a weekend, if there's nothing going on. And then during the week, um, trying to reach out to the elementary schools within that area, and offering it, or having a flyer of some kind out there, that lets those parents know that are in walking distance, and that have the access during the day to come and, you know, get food. Because I know that both of the elementary schools within that area do qualify, for the most part, for the low income and, um, the free and reduced lunch and things like that.
Thanks Denise.
But to make it not, like you're saying, not a stigmatism words, I can't do it, you know?
Right.
We can definitely have more conversations about it.
Well, okay, that's a lot of feedback from not only here, but just the, the information that you just, um, presented to us is, is, um, you know, very touching in terms of, uh, the, the numbers of individuals who need the food.
Well, thank you.
So, um, thank you for, um, continuing on the project.
Yeah, and also just in terms of transparency, you might wanna fact-check my numbers, just a little bit, but I know it's in the hundred thousands, I just wanna be honest with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have a speaker, uh, we have, um, Ms. Pamela Di, Di Giovanni.
Good evening, first of all, say, congratulations, Commissioner, you're a great asset already, you're off the block. Lucky to have her, she's a great asset, as you, you can see already, she's ready to serve, and great at Daily City Partnerships. Um, to piggyback what Denise was saying, is our Jefferson Elementary School District, as you know, Woodrow is our lowest, uh, income underserved school with our Latino area as well. So, um, and you know how our, the superintendent, Ver- Bernie, always puts the flyers in the backpacks as well, to, to notify the, the parents. And Jefferson High School has always been the center of where we've been doing a lot of community events, with the supervisor, Canapa, and I'm sure we could get him on board, and have like a, a middle thing with Reyna over there, our Pacific Islanders, as, as Mr. Kern and everybody knows. She would probably be a great asset to partner with, and, uh, because that's a walkable community, and we have the Latino grocery across the street, next door to the Bank of America, and that's serving our Filipino community as well, and other communities, Burmese, and a great, I can't even go on about it, diverse as great is, but a lot, that's a walkable area, so that they can come there, cause a lot of them don't have cars, as you know.
Correct, yeah.
And thank you for recognizing Orange County, because in the Santa Ana District, and you're right, Tustin area, coast of Mesa, hard to believe that now we have gotten to this point where we have wealthy
Oh my gosh.
and low-income, working poor, where it's a crisis. And if we are losing everybody out of our schools, we're gonna have a community that collapses out of our public schools, and we don't want that. So I commend you guys for trying to help, and the food bank, Mr. Kern and Denise and your department, and, and the commissioners, because it's really nice to come here and, and hear that, the, the compassion of care, because if we do come together, I think that it will help. We could do whatever we can to try to make it better here, because this is our Daily City, and no one ever thinks about us, except our leaders like you, and Mayor Manalo, and, and of course, Canapa, and these great people here. So thank you for doing that, I really appreciate it, and
Thank you.
To the Commissioner, impressed him already.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on to our, our next item on the director's report, uh, relating to parking restrictions at the Westlake Park?
Yeah, this is a much more formal discussion, but I thought we, we would start here before we work through the traffic committee. Interesting phenomenons happen both at, at Geller and, I should actually, Geller and Westlake Park both, where casino buses are putting out the word that they're gonna pick up, let's say, at Westlake Park in a parking lot, on Tuesday at eight AM, and what happens is by, by seven-thirty, we might have forty cars there to meet the bus to go for a day trip to the casino. Harmless enough activity, except it's taking up forty parking spots at our community centers.
Oh my god.
And that's not so cool. So, we've been, we've recognized that it's becoming more of an issue, like I said, not, we, on the agenda, it says Westlake Park, we're having a similar issue at Geller, and I know, uh, at, at the Ceremony Shopping Center, I had a meeting over there today, and I saw the casino buses lined up on Callan. Daily City folks like their day trips to the casino, but the problem is, at, at the parks, it's taking parking spots. So what we were kind of toying with the idea, and I'd like to get some feedback from the commission, is maybe it's time to impose some parking restrictions at, at the parks, so that if you leave your car for twelve hours, you're subject to be towed or cited, uh, because most of the people coming to our centers, except for the employees, are there for, you know, maybe two hours, four hours at the longest. And so we're thinking, maybe if we put, you know, restricted to four hours of parking, and maybe have a, a permit system, so that, you know, the employees that have a business purpose to be there for eight or ten hours, don't get cited. But discourage our parks from becoming a pickup place, we're not gaining anything from it, it's the casinos are, are the ones that benefit from this relationship.
And they're taking away the income from the community, not to be returned.
Yes, there's that, there's that too. It's a little bit predatory, you know, coming to the senior center, and they try to get their flyers out there.
For, um, for example, I, you know, I work in the film industry and all that, what they do sometimes, they rent the parking to, to some companies, I mean, some places like us, and, um, so the people that are employed are there for a little bit, they pay this company for, for the beneficiaries of that parking space. So that can be another, one option, like, let's make an agreement between the casinos and say, you know what? If you're gonna bring all these people, they know how many people are gonna be in the list for the tours. I don't know, I'm just bringing ideas, that is one that they, they pay us for those parking spot for you, for the use the whole day, or I don't know, it's just a, one idea that I.
That's actually, that's a very good point, and if it sounds vaguely familiar, we talked about this maybe a year or so ago, because in addition to the casino trips, we have overnight, sometimes three and four-day-long trips. And in that case, we did have, bring to the city council, and, and there is an eight-dollar per car, per night fee for those. And that, the good thing about that, they tend to be smaller groups, um, maybe fifteen cars, as opposed to these day trips, with bus holds, I think, fifty-five people, and forty people drive by themselves. So, you know, it's a much bigger impact, with no benefit, because we're not charging them, because they're not staying overnight. But they stay overnight, they're subject to eight dollars a night fee.
Have we identified which casinos are, are providing their buses into this area?
I haven't paid close attention, but I think it's more than one.
Yeah, I mean, going up into the North Bay, I guess, casinos.
Yeah, if, if you, on any given day, drive down Callan in the morning, behind the Ceremony Center, you can see them lined up. And I don't know how the, the, the shopping center deals with it, cause I'm sure those people that are boarding the bus are parking in the shopping center, which is not,
Well, uh, I noticed that the shopping center puts up some kind of sign before they even decide to enter into their new garage, no parking, you know? But I started to notice on Sundays that, um, the, the casino parkers are parking right above Geller Park on Callan now, to walk over there to catch the bus. But, um, yeah, it's, uh, yeah, it, it, there's, the spaces are being taken away from those who enjoy the park on the weekends, and those who use it for, um, the weekdays, you know, when they're practicing soccer or what have you in, in the Geller Park. Maybe it is time to look at some kind of parking restrictions, um, enforcement.
And I'm, the suggestions, the, the city has a traffic committee, and it's made up of, are traffic engineers, the chair, the police, fire, and planning. Um, and they look at all the changes to cha- traffic regulations, and in fact, they are about to look at, uh, War Memorial, because we have a similar, that very small parking lot of a hillside boulevard is being monopolized by people from the neighborhood, not visitors to the community centers, so that will go to the city council under the recommendation of the traffic committee. But I thought this would be a good sounding board, so that we can give a suggestion to the traffic committee, that maybe they could explore a little bit further.
Right, right, and, um, I know that there's, uh, meter maids that go around the neighborhood to park, uh, to ticket those who don't move their cars.
Traffic enforcement.
Trap, excuse me, sorry, traffic enforcers, enforcement, uh, crew who ride around the neighborhood on certain days to take care of the garbage pickup, uh, parking. So, um, uh, I would think that, uh, we can, um, see if we can, um, have them, uh, become part of the enforcement group for, for this parking situation that we're incurring. So, yeah, I, I, I'd like to take it up further, uh, with, uh, some suggestions to council to kind of like.
Yeah, we'll, we'll send it to the traffic committee and let them explore options and keep you informed.
Okay, great.
Up, up until recently, we didn't have any traffic or parking restrictions at any of our parks.
In San, yeah, you know, in San Francisco, I think the Mason, the public access, they have four-hour parking, two-hour parkings, you know? So maybe we can impose that.
Thank you.
I like this, we have another speaker. Keep on coming, um, we have, Mr. Paul Malatant, sir.
Uh, hi everyone, uh, a suggestion? I, I'd, I'd ask, um, the local casinos to, um, have like a coupon, uh, maybe an Uber coupon, in which the participants would pay for, or whatever, the casinos can deal with the cu- with the, uh, participants, have like a fifteen-dollar coupon to Uber drivers, to drive the participants to the stop, and have, um, and they would redeem the coupon. So, I have a, uh, casino Uber coupon, and then, um, I wanna go for a day trip, and they pick me up, and, and then whatever, and bring me home. So, that would take care of the parking situation, and avoid parking tickets and towing. So, the participants would be charged, um, by the casinos. I think casinos would be happy about that, and as far as, uh, yes, uh, increasing, uh, parking, uh, fines, or whatever, would be a good thing, uh, using alternative ways, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And that's thinking outside the box too, so I like that.
All the ideas, as well.
Yeah, thank you. And, um, any more along those lines regarding, uh, casino buses in the, in our parkings that we wanted to kind of like expand on, or, or can we move on to?
I think I'll take the feedback to the traffic committee and
Great, great.
See if, if they decide.
All right, thank you, Joseph. Well, we're at that point in the meeting where, uh, there are several announcements and communications to share. Joseph, can you, um, take us on that journey here?
Well, we can start with the commissioner's report.
Oh, okay, excuse me.
If the commissioners have any reports to me, and I know you do.
Sorry about that, uh, but do we have, uh, anything from our commissioners that they'd like to bring to the table? Um, that maybe their constituents or community are bringing to them, that you'd like to share?
Well, I, I like to just, uh, say thank you very much to, uh, the coordinators of the Hispanic Heritage, um, celebration this past, uh, month, and, um, especially to the, the crews of City Daily City, uh, and Partner and Recreation, who were up there in all hours to set up that stage, set up the balloons, uh, set up the, the tables. And also extend, uh, a thank you to Ms. Nancy Rodriguez, Mission High School Instructor-Counselor, and part of our Daily City Arts Commission, for helping coordinate the Hispanic festivities. Uh, it was great to see all the flags out there, the different heritages of Latin community around the stage. And it was nice to see the, uh, the high schoolers, um, playing their mariachi music, and the dancers, so it was very colorful. So, next year, mark your calendar and keep your eye out on the website for the next Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, so thank you all.
I'd like to follow up too, and extend a very special thank you to Eduardo Bolaños of our staff, who took the lead on it this year, and he had a lot of help assisting him. Um, I also wanted to mention the future Business Leaders of America from Westmore High School, they were out here early, and they stayed late, and they did a lot of heavy lifting on that day, so thank you to both of them.
Right.
So I, oh, you have one more, that, that was your one.
I, I, I'm gonna surrender my microphone to Denise in just one minute, but I wanted to, at our last meeting, we talked about our Daily City Parks and Open Sp- Open Space Master Plan, and in fact, if you were at the Latino Heritage Event, we had a booth there taking inputs, listening, suggestions from the community there. If you missed that opportunity, there's still plenty more opportunities to weigh in with your opinions about our parks in open space, and now there's an online option, and if, uh, people are watching us, if they go to www.dailycityparksplan.org, there's an online survey there, and there's, there's a couple versions of the survey, depending on how engaged you wanna become. So, we'll keep you updated periodically about the progress of the Daily City Parks and Open Space Master Plan. Now Denise.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you, Joseph.
So, we have quite a few events coming up that everybody can partake in. The first one is the Supporters of Dodger Senior Center Fall Festival, and that's in conjunction with the Department of Library and Recreation Services. It's gonna be on Sunday, October seventh, at the Dodger Senior Center, Cafe Dodger, one-on-one Lake Merced Boulevard, from eight-thirty AM to one PM, opening remarks start at ten AM. There's a complimentary breakfast for all Dodger Senior Center members, of the supporters, and then if there's guests and non-members, they can purchase tickets for five dollars. There are flu shots presented by Walgreens at the War Memorial Community Center on Monday, October eighth, two thousand eighteen, six-six-five-five Mission Street. October eighth, two thousand eighteen, six-six-five-five Mission Street, from one to four PM. It is free and you can contact nine-nine-one-eight-zero-zero-one for more information. The Casa Yahan Sa, Daly City Celebration on Saturday, October thirteenth, at March Bank. It is an amazing event, huge, in the, um, baseball field area. Ten South Parkview Drive from eleven AM to three PM. It is free and if you have more information, our main office number, and I'm not gonna keep saying it, is nine-nine-one-eight-zero-zero-one. And there's also little cards out at any one of our community centers and libraries, so check it out. There's a self-defense clinic on Thursday, October eighteenth, at the War Memorial Community Center, again, six-six-five-five Mission Street, from five to six-thirty PM. It's free. But if you want more information about that, call nine-nine-one-eight-zero-two-zero, which is the War Memorial Community Center number. And just, those are two things that are happening, the flu shots and self-defense clinic. We're getting more involved in getting, um, programs and classes and free clinics and things like that at the War Memorial Community Center. Our staff up there is trying to boost, um, getting more engaged with the community. So you'll see little free clinics, see if people are interested and if they're interested, then there might be class opportunities offered. Um, the Haunted Pool, boo, no. On Friday, October twenty-sixth, at the Giamona Pool, um, one-thirty-one Westmore Avenue, from six-thirty to nine-thirty PM. That is an eight-dollar entrance fee. More information, call our main office, nine-nine-one-eight-zero-zero-one. That is a very exciting and fun event and it's a little scary, not too scary, because we try and keep it age-based. And then if you want to keep having some fun after Halloween, we have the Trunk or Treat and Movie in the Gym at Westlake Park in Pacelli Gym on Friday, November second, um, at one-forty-five Lake Merced Boulevard. It's at six PM. Um, it is free. I like that word, don't you? Free. I think they're showing the movie.
Transylvania?
No. You want to help out, Joseph? I can't think of it right now.
A horror movie.
No, it's a, it's a fun movie.
Beetlejuice.
And I can't think.
Beetlejuice, yes, it's that one.
You have the guide. Joseph's gonna go to the guide real quick and he's gonna find what the movie is because I apparently don't know and you're not in the wrong s- page area, keep going.
Talk amongst yourselves.
It's free.
We're gonna, we'll go back to that and I'll just name off the last event, but not the least event. The War Memorial Madness is happening on Saturday, November seventeenth, at the War Memorial Community Center. It's at ten AM and it's a three-on-three basketball event. It's twenty dollars per team and for more information, you contact Gina, who's the Recreation Program Supervisor up there at seven-four-six-eight-three-three-one. Joseph has the name of the movie.
Coco.
Coco, I knew it was a short, I was trying to say Cujo, but I knew it wasn't that. So Coco is the movie on movie night at Giamona Pool. And we have not defined yet what the movie is at the trunk or treat, but I'm sure it will be a little scarier.
I know, that is.
Oh, that's the trunk or treat?
Trunk or treat.
Okay. Coco is the movie at trunk or treat and movie in the gym. And if you're not familiar with trunk or treat, people open up their trunks, all community related, so community service groups, rec has their own trunks, they decorate them all and then the kids go and have healthy, happy candy. Because they know it's safe. So those are all the announcements. You can find anything that I just talked about either in our activity guide or call our main line, nine-nine-one-eight-zero-zero-one to find out more information. Thank you so much.
I have a question. Is this till, till November or, or it's just for right now? Or do you have a need for, um, Thanksgiving?
No, so next commission meeting, I'll be revan, re, re-talking about some of these items, but I wanted to make sure you got them all on your calendar so that you knew where to go, when to go. And then on October twenty-sixth, at our next meeting, I'll be happy to repeat some of them.
I believe our next meeting is October twenty-third.
Oh, sorry, that's right. Denise signing off.
Thank you Denise. Well done. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to those who, uh, came up to speak, uh, and share their thoughts and suggestions. And, um, again, thank you Pamela, thank you Paul. Yeah, and, um, we have a, quite a bit that was discussed tonight, so more folks, come on and join us, uh, we can use your ideas as we, uh, go into the new year, uh, this year. And, uh, but, um, this brings us to a close of our meeting. Do I have a motion to close this evening's meeting?
I move that we close today's meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, those in favor of closing this evening's meeting, do you say aye?
Aye.
This meeting is now closed, thank you.
Thank you, Joseph, thank you.